The January 5th City Council Meeting is called to order. We have our invocation by Pastor Larry B. Woodruff, Holy Light Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Most gracious and eternal Father, maker and ruler of the universe, the great I am, I give thanks to you for the blessings you have given to us in past years and what you've already done for us in this new year. You've shown us divine favor despite our shortcomings. You've looked past our faults and have given us the necessities of life. Thank you, Father, for providing us with good health and the mental ability to matriculate throughout this world. Lord God, I solicit your attention toward our mayor, each of our councilors, every staff member, every public servant, and every citizen of every district in our great city of Birmingham. Father, I come this morning as an advocate of love, peace, understanding, and unity, asking you to lift this city to a new consciousness that will benefit us all as time moves on. We need your presence and power to make righteous and unselfish decisions for our city. Send a special anointing on this building. Help us all to be good stewards of what you have afforded us and entrusted us into your, our care. Then, dear God, bless every family that is represented here in this chamber today and always. Cover those of every faith and fellowship and those who don't even know you with the hope that they will come to know you before eternity passes them by. We humbly call for your spirit to take the helm of this meeting and every other meeting to come. And for every good thing that is said and done, you will receive all the glory and honor and praise. In the perfect and matchless name of Jesus the Christ, we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember Lundey. Councilmember Parker.
Morning.
Morning, sir. President Pro Tim Roberson.
Happy New Year, Mr. Clerk.
Happy New Year. Councilmember Rafferty. Councilmember Scales.
Morning.
Morning. Councilmember Tyson. Morning. President Austin.
Present. Morning. Happy New Year to you and the audience, Mr. Clerk. We have a motion on the minutes from October 6th and 13th, 2015. Does the President like to move on the minutes? Roberson, Parker.
Okay. Roberson, Parker. All right. Voting should be open now. Missing Councilmember Scales and Tyson.
Yes, there's no one allowed to vote.
How would you like to vote, Council Tyson?
Yes.
All right, thanks. That vote should be up.
All right. That item passes. The minutes are not ready from October 20th through December 29th. We have announcements from any boards and agencies.
We do not have any.
All right, let's move with the consideration of consent agenda, Mr. Clerk.
All right. Consent agenda starts on page number two with item three. On page three, you have item four on consent. On page four, you have items five, six, and seven on consent. Page five, you have items eight, nine, and 10 on consent. Page six, you have items 11, 12, and 13 on consent. Page seven, we have items 14, 16, 17, and 18 on consent. Page eight, please withdraw item 19. We have item 20 on consent. Also withdraw item 21 from the agenda. And we have items 22 and 23 on consent, with 23 being added to the consent agenda. Yes, ma'am.
19 and 21.
And 21.
Yes.
Page nine, we have items 24, 25, 26, and 27 added to the consent agenda. That's 24, 25, 26, and 27. And we have one addendum item.
All right. Do you have any councilmembers want to speak to the consent agenda? We'll add item 28 to consent. President?
Mr. Pro Tim.
On page, um... Seven. Item 15. He said we can't add it. Okay, we gotta renounce it. Okay, all right. Page eight, item 23. That's already been placed on it, but you don't want it on consent? All right. 23 and 24. Page nine. Item 24. Yeah, they don't want that on there. Okay, that's fine. Item 25. Yeah, those are on there, 25, 26, and 27. Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. And the addendum item, can we add the addendum item? That was just, that's the third. That's the third time we've seen this item, Mr. President, and they had to make one slight revision to it. Yeah. It's just a... Item 28.
All right. Do we have any other members who wish to speak to the consent agenda? Are there any members of public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium if there are any members of public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing. You may now approach the podium. All right. Do we have a mover and a second?
I'd like to move the consent agenda. Roberson, Scales.
Question about 25, Mr. President, is that on consent?
Yes.
Yes. Um, who made the motion, sir?
Roberson, Scales.
Thank you. Voting should be open for the consent agenda.
Can't vote yet.
All right, now. Tyson, yes. Councilmember Hoyt. Thank you, sir. Abbott, Lundey is out. There he is. That vote should be up.
That item passes. Our next item, Mr. Clerk, should be item one.
Item one?
Yep.
All right. Let me get Mr. Abbott and Lundey. All right, item one. Item one, an ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham. Case number ZAC 2015-17 to change zone district boundaries from ONI office and institutional district to B1 neighborhood business district filed by Richard Bishop, representing the owner, Silvertron Two Properties LLC for property located at 3625 8th Avenue South, situated in the northwest quarter of Section 32 Township 17 South, Range 2 West, in the hearing of all interested parties.
We have a mover and a second? Move the item. Roberson, Parker. Council Rafferty.
Mr. Gambrell, if you please.
Yes, ma'am. This is ZAC 2015-17 in the Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood. And it is a rezoning request to rezone the subject property from ONI to B1 in order to allow a restaurant and catering service business. The subject .61 acre property is located at 3625 8th Avenue South, Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood. North of the subject property is Ram Tool Business and United Way of Central Alabama, which is zoned ONI. East of the subject property is Style Advertising, Inc., which is zoned ONI. While west of the subject property are single-family homes zoned R3. A multifamily home is located south of the subject property also, which is zoned R6. The applicant's proposal complies with the B1 zoning district regulations and the site meets its parking requirement. The city's long-range land use plan identifies the property for mixed-use medium and therefore it's consistent, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the plan. The Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood met its regular scheduled meeting on October 6th, 2015. The vote was 60 to 0 to approve. The neighborhood did request that Q conditions be placed on the property. They are requesting that the building permit, site landscaping plan signage all be reviewed and approved by Design Review Committee on recommendations from the Avondale Park Architectural Advisory Committee. And they had a second Q condition that they requested for hours of operation, but under advisement of council, that's not something that we can do. So we're not recommending that Q condition. And then, on the November 3rd, 2015 zoning advisory committee, they voted to recommend the approval. The Planning and Zone Committee of the City Council voted to recommend approval of this case's regular meeting on November 10, 2015. I did, I did want to mention that we can add this first condition, but we'll have to do it as an amendment to the ordinance. Otherwise, that's my report.
Thank you, sir. This is a public parent, uh, public hearing. Are there any speakers to this item? Please state your name.
My name is Jack Thompson. I, along with Mr. Bishop, own the entity that's going to lease the property from the owner. So we're here to answer any questions you might have about our operation or what we intend to do with the property.
Thank you, sir. If you'll just have a seat. Are there any other speakers to this item? Counselor, are there any questions? Then at this time, this concludes case number ZAC 2015. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah. I just wanted to say before we wrap this up that I did attend the Forest Park South Avondale meeting when this was discussed. And the neighborhood was solidly in favor of this. This is the old Gigi in the Park Restaurant location. It's been used for a number of different things since then, none of which have worked out. So I think the neighborhood felt like this was a good use of the property.
Thank you. Any further? Then this concludes case number ZAC 2015-00017. Mr. President, we're ready to move for an amendment for the Q conditions.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, ready, Mr. Clerk.
Voting should be up.
And this is for the amendment for the Q conditions?
Okay, that's fine.
This is, we're voting on the item right now.
We have to...
They, they already have...
They mentioned the Q condition.
He said they had to be amended into the...
Yeah, because the resolution needs to be amended to include the first Q condition.
Okay.
Mr. President, I move that the first Q condition be added to the resolution.
Sir?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, now the vote should be open for...
All right. With the Q conditions, thank you. Counselor Rafferty.
Councilmember Tyson. Thank you. Counselor Hart. That vote should be up.
All right, that item passes. Next item?
Should be item two. An ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham. Case number ZAC 2015-18 to change zone district boundaries from R3 single-family district to B1 neighborhood business district filed by Alexander Turner, representing the owner, Woodland Community Church of God for property located at 981 46th Street North, situated in the northeast quarter of Section 20 Township 17 South, 2 West, in the hearing of all interested parties.
We have a mover and a second? Mr. President, move the item.
Second.
Roberson, Abbott. Council Rafferty.
Mr. Gambrell, if you'll proceed with the report.
Sure. This is ZAC 2015-18, the Kingston Neighborhood. And it is a request to rezone subject property from R3 single-family to B1 neighborhood business district for the purpose of providing overflow parking for the church there. The subject .33 acre property is located at 981 46th Street North in the Kingston Neighborhood. Property is mainly surrounded by single-family homes, all of which is zoned R3. North of the subject property is an apartment complex, while south of the subject property is zoned R5. The applicant's proposal complies with B1 zoning district regulations for a parking lot. The current site has, let's see, 24 parking spaces. And their proposed addition is 16 parking spaces for a total of 40. And so that, that meets the parking requirement. The city's long-range land use plan identifies the property for residential low, which is not consistent with this rezoning application, is not consistent with that plan. The Kingston Neighborhood met at its regular scheduled meeting on October 26th, 2015. And the vote was 8 to 0 to approve. The neighborhood also requested a Q be placed on the property, limiting the B1 uses to parking lot only. At its regular scheduled meeting on November 3rd, 2015, the zoning advisory committee voted to recommend approval of the applicant's request, including the Q condition for parking lot only. The Planning and Zoning Committee of the City Council voted to recommend approval of this case's regular scheduled meeting on November 10th as QB1 with the same Q condition to limit the use to parking lot only. And that is, concludes the report.
Thank you, sir. And so the Q condition is already included in, in the resolution that we're looking at.
No, we would have to amend it.
Amended as well, thank you. Okay, is the applicant present? Please state your name for the record.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Pastor Joseph Carlton. I live at 834 Rose Drive, Huffman, Alabama. And again, we came for your help because of the fact we are trying to build a new church and we need the additional parking space to do so. Uh, the existing parking lot will not hold the, the people that we're trying to place in the church. So we're just, we need your help to try to, in other words, better the community and that's what we're here for.
Thank you, sir. You may have a seat. This is a public hearing. Are there any speakers to this item? Seeing none, are there any counselors that would like to speak to this item? Counselor Scales.
Thank you and good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I, I'm always in favor of church growth because church growth represents community. And that's a good sign, and especially considering where you are. I will tell you just a little FYI, you are in District 2. And, uh, and I heard where you live. So nevertheless, I'm hoping that all parties that hear understand that, especially when we have issues in our city, some things the church can address what we can't and what we can't legislate. So I'm hoping that this is found to be favorable. And, and I just wanted to share, share my support in that upfront because it's going to take us partnering with church organizations. It's going to take us partnering with a lot of organizations to help us to become, become the city that I know that we can be. So I just wanted to say that for the record, and I'm hoping that everyone else feels the same way. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. President Austin, there is one gentleman who would like to speak from the public. May I bring him forward? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Cedric Hatcher, resigned 2305th Avenue North. Just want to speak on behalf of the man of God, great man. Doors always open up to the community, you know what I mean? Not just a, a title by the name church, because we got a lot of churches, but it ain't the Lord's church, you know what I mean? It's a whosoever will come kind of church, you know what I mean? A place of prayer. You know the Bible said my house should be called a place of worship and a place of prayer, but you turned it into a den of thieves. We ain't got to get in that day. I ain't come to preach no sermon this morning. But there's a great man of God right here. Him and his wife and his family, doors are always open. He's a heaven man of God. Preach the word, you know what I mean? Don't compromise the word. That's all I want to say by my friend this morning.
Thank you, sir. Council President Austin?
I just wanted to, um, ask, I know that the neighborhood voted 8 to 0 to approve this. Mr. Gambrell said it wasn't consistent with our land use plan.
That's correct.
You said it called for B or...
The property is zoned R3, and then the plan shows it being single-family low-density. But, you know, it's, it's, you know, we run into these problems occasionally, you know, there's church and a community. You know, where do they park? And so, you know, their only best option is across the street.
Okay. And the Q condition would revert back to...
It, it would limit, it would just limit the use of the lot to parking lot only and, and within the B1 district, and then all those uses in the R3 envelope.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Then this concludes the public hearing for case number ZAC 2015-00018. And, uh, Council President, we're ready for a motion on the Q conditions.
Mr. President? I'd like to move for the amendment on the Q conditions for this case, please.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, we're ready to vote on the item as amended.
Our voting should be open. That vote should be up.
That item passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk, should be 15.
Item 15. A resolution appointing Councilmember Kimberly Rafferty as chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Committee to the Birmingham Planning Commission as an ex-official member, said term expiring November the 14th, 2017.
President?
President, I move approval.
Second. Abbott, Roberson. Ready to vote?
All right. Voting should be open. Councilmember Rafferty. That vote should be up.
That item passes. Next item?
19 has been requested to be withdrawn, as well as 21. Next should be 23.
Call of item 23 and 24.
All right, item 23. A resolution accepting and approving the bid of Brit Demolition, Hesfield, Alabama, for the purchase and demolition of Group 1 Lockway Gardens Multiple Unit Apartments Buildings in the amount of $226,800 for the Planning, Engineering, and Permits Department. This being the lowest remaining bid submitted. Item 24. A resolution accepting and approving the bid of Motley Construction Birmingham for the purchase and demolition of Group 2 Lockway Gardens Multiple Unit Apartment Buildings in the amount of $152,000 for the Planning, Engineering, and Permits Department. This being the lowest bid submitted.
We have a mover and a second?
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
Abbott, Scales. You have any speakers to this item? Your name is up. Counselor Tyson?
I'm not going to say a lot because I think I'll start crying. Crying and really, um... It's, 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 you know, I'm just happy for our community, the things that we had to go through in order to get this done. It's just, we're just happy.
Counselor Scales?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I did tell the Patriot Councilmember of that district, it was just only a few months ago, probably about five or six months ago, that we stood out there in the sun as a council and Counselor Tyson leading the march and, and talked about neighborhood revitalization. It's going to take that. It's one thing for us to, to vote on various items. And unfortunately, it has come down to a point where it even appears to be very disparaging. But I'm so happy today. I'm very proud of this council member. She didn't stop until she convinced everybody that they needed to get on board. Because though we represent our various districts, we still also represent the city of Birmingham at large. So I'm very happy for the neighborhood that not only did I grew up in, got married, and was off 12th Street, and knew a whole lot about Lockway. So I saw it in its peak days, and I've seen it where it is today. So I just wanted to say to this council member, kudos to you. Kudos to the Council President for allowing us as a council to see the bigger vision beyond our individual districts. And I look forward to more of that happening throughout this city. I also want to thank the mayor and his staff, everybody that came on board and wanted to be on full deck to make sure that this not only is something that we pass, but that we actually implement. So today is a great day for what I call West End, Alabama. Congratulations, Counselor Tyson, well deserved. And I know that your district will remember you in days to come. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Pro Tim?
You, you all can keep clapping. As I reflect at the beginning of the term for this council, there was one council member that we all agreed should chair the Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. And luckily, she still chairs that committee. We knew that she would have the passion to want to clean up the neighborhoods. We knew that she would have the passion to want to revitalize the neighborhoods in the western area of our city. And I couldn't think of a better person than Counselor Sheila Tyson to serve in that role as chair of that committee. She has, and I said this in Powell Neighborhood Association meeting last night, and she got the same applause last night. But she has truly been a champion for this effort to get rid of the blight in our community, particularly at Lockway Gardens. And just, she knows this for clarity purposes, that's 6 and 7. And so that's both our districts. And, but she had taken the lead on it, taken ownership of it, sat down and met with the mayor, his staff, to formulate an idea, conception of what we will do after we knock these buildings down. So that's just cooperative effort and good leadership on her behalf. And so I just want to commend you again, Counselor, publicly for your efforts to address Lockway Gardens. I see that being the Garden of Eden one day. A beautiful place that we will all be happy for, that people will live in, in beautiful homes in West End. So again, I want to commend you for your leadership and your efforts on getting this started. And thank you, Mayor, for the cooperation with your staff and working with your administration to move this forward today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Hoyt?
Let me say good morning. Counselor, my uncle was called a fanatical cumulus because he was fanatical about relationships beyond his own. And I want to call you a fanatical, community-minded person. Because he says when you're fanatical, you don't change your mind and you don't change your subject. And so we knew coming in that Lockway was on your mind and Lockway is your subject. And so it proves that when you raise the issue, you begin to get others to join with you in concert. I think I share with you that Comedia Terrace was this same kind of place. And I was a neighborhood president. And every time I came before the city council, I raised the issue of Comedia Terrace. We want it down. And you have done an awesome job of keeping this before us. And it's, it's evident that because of your activism, of your community being behind you, I see Ms. Moses and others over there who are here and wanted this down. Now, unlike Counselor Rosen, Pro Tim Rosen, you know, my district is not as close as he is. But I may not be in the house, but I am on the porch. Okay? So I just want you to know that. And, but that's what it takes. And not only Lockway, but everything west of 65 need the same kind of attention. The same kind of attention. And so I'm going to start screaming again, as you have. But I just want to make sure that you got what you got, so you can help me get what I need to get. Okay? Just want you to know that. But much to be said about the mayor and his staff for ensuring that this happens. Um, and so... Um, and so, uh, and this council, uh, this council president, this great leadership and making sure that we, um, maintain our focus with, uh, trying to, uh, make sure this come to a reality. Uh, and we hoping that this be the spark that really engages the flame. So, uh, thank you, uh, everybody, uh, for, uh, making this a priority. That's all I have to say, Mr. President.
Council Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I wanted to, um, compliment Sheila Tyson, she is a bulldog. She gets hold of the pants leg, she does not let go. And in this case of Lockway Gardens, you know, the place looks like a third world country and we're not one. And I'm amazed at the, the, uh, bids because the, the cost of taking this place down is really not nearly as bad as we thought it was gonna be. And I hope that we recycle all of those materials from those apartment buildings because, uh, you know, it's a lot of mess. But I think this will be a game changer in that area of, of West End. And I just want to say that, uh, you know, you should, I know you're crying, but you should be smiling because this is a big deal and, and you accomplished it by being that, that bulldog that didn't let go. So, um, thank you for your hard work.
Yes. I want to say before calling you Council Skills, um, Council Tyson, you know, I, and to the community, this is what happens when you elect people that care about your neighborhood. This is what happens when you elect people that care about your neighborhood. These are the types of things that happen. Councilor Tyson has been an advocate for neighborhood revitalization, neighborhood cleanup, neighborhood period. And this is what happens when you elect people that care about your neighborhood and care about the community and care about the people. I agree with everything that every one of my colleagues have said about the impact that this will have in, uh, the west side of Birmingham. And more importantly, the people who live right there in that community. Um, the children that live there, what is their future gonna look like? We know after today it won't look the same because Lockway Gardens is gonna be gone. And I just certainly want to commend you, Council Tyson, for your work and your advocacy. And I know that, that you're full of emotion, um, and I think that we all are because we went out there with you. Uh, we stood with you and we all stood together, uh, saying that this needed to be done. And, and I just want to commend you for, for just being an advocate for the people. Uh, I want to thank all of my colleagues on the council for your commitment to helping make this a reality. And of course, we couldn't have done it, uh, if we didn't have the mayor's support. And so I want to thank the mayor too for making this happen. I appreciate it, Mayor, I do. Um, it's important and I believe that the citizens and the residents, uh, of not only this area, but other areas in the city, uh, will really see that we do care about them. And that's what we're up here trying to do is, is improve their life and their quality of life. And we may not agree on how we get there, but we all agree, I believe, that we wanna go there and we want to, uh, really help our neighborhoods. So, um, I just, again, Council Tyson, want to commend you, congratulate you. Looking forward to, to watching the first bricks come down and, and, uh, really transforming the area. Council Skills.
Thank you, Miss President. And let me just say this in closing, I did the math. And so, uh, I want everyone to know that your council member for that area brought home three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars to get this, uh, demolition torn down and of, of Lockway Gardens. But not just that, she is also working with the mayor currently to make sure that it's redeveloped so it doesn't turn into a neighborhood nuisance. I still want to reiterate, Mr. President, um, that the council went out, we had these budget meetings, and we told the folk in the neighborhood that we wanna hear what you have to say. I want to thank you, Mr. President, for staying true to that. Because there's no need in us going out talking to folk in the neighborhood and all of that stuff. And then we don't make good on anything that we say, or at least make an attempt. So, only one last thing that I would ask of the colleagues, because I do believe in this. Um, the Bible says that charity begins at home and then it spreads abroad. I think that we owe this council member a standing ovation for the work that she has done. And neighbors, you do the same. And, and guess what, Counselor? I always believe in this. When they say women just make babies and in the kitchen, I said women can do a whole lot more than that. All right, so, thank you, uh, and congratulations again, uh, Councilor Tyson and the people of West End, Alabama. You deserve it. I fight for the east, but I fight for the city and I'm excited about what's to come. This is more of what's to come. And I thank you, Council Tyson, you my girl, and you deserve every bit of what we gave you today. You deserve it. Thank you, Miss President.
Council Tyson.
Yes, uh, I want to make sure that we are notified, uh, Mayor, when the, uh, the first, when the demolition start. I was out this morning talking to the residents on Woodland Avenue. I think that's why I'm so emotional, because they were crying and they were so happy. But they was happy because we are tearing down apartments and that show that citizens don't want a whole lot. They just want they, their neighborhood clean and safe and a good school for their children they go, go to. They ain't asking for no million dollars and no gold sidewalks and stuff that, that, you know, just, just impossible. They want the simple things in life. And it just, and it just hurt my feelings so bad this morning because they didn't want a whole lot. You know, just a clean neighborhood and the re, and it just, they don't want to live in, 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 in a community where it affect the quality of life for them. And that just really touched me and I cried all the way here. But I know I couldn't have did it without the city council and the mayor. I, I just wouldn't know where to start at. I, I just wouldn't knew how to even get the people to support me, to get this moved. And, and Marcus Lundy, I, I know that you stood up for me and I appreciate it. And I just, uh, President Austin, y'all just don't know what this has done for this community. Not so much myself, but the apartments that's around this neighborhood and around this, this, this Lockway Gardens. They remodeled their apartments. They didn't mind Monroe Villa, they, they put money to their apartment. Four Winds West put three million dollars into Four Winds West where they could try to eat. I just, I, all I did was talk to them. And they was willing to remodel their apartments if we could do something with Lockway Gardens. And that's called working together. And all, it's no reason why any large structure or abandoned houses should be sending our communities like this. There's no reason why I should do that, because they don't want a lot. We gotta stay focused on these communities and make people wanna come and move in and make quality people wanna move in. We got to, we got to raise the standards, eliminate all of these choices that we are giving these drug dealers and these criminals in order to come in our community. We giving them so many choices to come in. Just eliminate some of that stuff and get these apartments up to standards. And if you, you get nice apartments and, and, and raise the rent, you gonna get quality people. And that's what we gotta do from, uh, just all over the city of Birmingham. The citizens do not want a lot. They really do not. And I was out there early this, I, I wanted them to, to know that I, that we was voting on this. And I went and I knocked on the doors and I told them what we were doing. But they, I, they just was crying and it had me all emotional before I could even get up here. But I just thank my colleagues, I thank you, Mayor, so much. And you're gonna see the change of the quality of life of these, of the, our citizens on that side of town and in the city of Birmingham. And thank you so much. And make sure we know when they first, they first, when they get ready to start, we wanna be out there where we can, uh, celebrate. I want all the council out there with us, because we did this as a team. I didn't do it by myself. We did it as a team and thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Ready to vote, Mr. Clerk, on twenty-three and twenty-four?
All right, voting should be up. That vote should be up.
That item passes unanimously. Um, thank you, congratulations, Council Tyson. Um, next item, Mr. Clerk.
Abbott, Skills. Um, Mayor's report.
Yeah, all right. Communication from the mayor. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, Council. Morning. Morning.
And my congratulations and appreciation goes out to Council Tyson, who worked, worked very closely with my office to bring this day about. Um, we will notify you as to when the demolition process will start and make arrangements for you to, in the neighborhood to be, uh, present at that time. Uh, we will have to go through a process of, um, removing asbestos from the buildings. Uh, that will take some time, um, not too much time, but, uh, that will come about before the actual demolition of the buildings occur. Uh, and then after that, we'll notify you, uh, when, when that will take place. Um, in response to the Christmas Day tornado, um, PEP, Public Works and the Mayor's Office of Citizen Assistance, the Police Department and the Fire Department have all been actively working in District Seven to return a sense of normalcy to the residents impacted by the Christmas Day tornado. Our local EMA has been working, uh, with state, federal, uh, state and federal officials to assign dollar figures to the amount of damage. This is critically important in order to trigger state and federal aid. Jim Coker is here this morning to give us more information and give us an update. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, and Mr. President, members of the council. You know, on Christmas Day, most of us start of the day thinking family, thinking celebration. By the end of the evening, we realize that an unexpected storm would have an impact on many people in the city of Birmingham. I would like to take this moment to recognize the employees of the city of Birmingham because Birmingham's response was immediate. The police, the fire, Public Works, park employees, on a holiday, Christmas Day, everybody gave. And to me, what a wonderful day to be a giver. That day, we had no deaths. That in itself is a, is a gift. Yesterday, we had a city, county and state EMA assessment team go to the affected area. Uh, this took all day. There were many city employees involved with the assessments, both in preparation. Uh, would like to recognize Andre, um, for all the preparation work that was done. The results, uh, as a result of that, and this is still an ongoing incident, the majority of the federal assistance nationwide for events is in the form of Small Business Administration loans. That looks very likely, and I will give you the figures in just a minute. Individual assistance does not look likely at this time because we did not hit a particular threshold. Public assistance, which covers the cost of the response, is still ongoing. We have additional assessments that will occur either Saturday or Monday. Uh, the information that we got from the Small Business Administration yesterday, and this is their preliminary damage assessment, there were a total of two hundred and thirty-one homes touched by this event, two hundred and thirty-one. Thirty-four received major damage, one hundred and ninety-seven received minor damage for a total of three point six million dollars. There were a total of ten businesses, three received major damage, seven minor damage for a total of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And there were three churches, one with major damage, two with minor damage. That is an additional two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. SBA loans are available to homeowners, to business owners, to renters, to churches and to other nonprofits. But this is underway. Again, this is a continuing event. And as I close, uh, I want to thank you all, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to speak to you. The communications between EMA, the city of Birmingham, the other cities in the county are at a very, very good level. And as I close, I would also like to petition you for your assistance. This was a very short notice storm. We really didn't know. What we are trying to do is to give people the opportunity to have the time to make the decision on what steps to take. Because we don't want to lose any more lives in this county. I'd love your assistance. Yes, sir.
Let, let me also add my appreciation, not only to you and your department, but to our public, uh, safety organization, the police and fire. Uh, this was a citywide event, even though the tornado, uh, hit specifically, uh, in the southwest, uh, area of the, of the city. Uh, but there was, uh, flooding throughout the city. There were a number of lives that were put at risk that our, um, Police Department and Fire Department had to go out and pull people out of, uh, cars that had been, uh, caught up in the floods that were out there. And, uh, we're looking at damage all across the city, uh, in terms of being able to meet that threshold. And we'll continue to, we're continuing to work on that. But more importantly, the SBA, which is under a different set of, of rules and regulations than FEMA, has, has, uh, come in here and they're willing to give assistance, uh, through, um, um, uh, loans and other, uh, help uh, to those businesses and, and homeowners, uh, separate and apart from what FEMA may or may not declare at a future date. Uh, we're working very closely with the, um, governor and the state, uh, EMA office, as well as the federal EMA office. And it's an ongoing process, so I want to extend my thanks to you and everybody who came out on that, uh, Christmas, um, uh, evening to make sure that lives were protected and that, uh, we do all we can to get back to a sense of normalcy. Uh, thank you, Jim.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ladies.
Council Skills, I had mine.
You did. I'll yield to Council Howard if he wants to. But I was gonna say, I do want to thank you, sir, and I want to thank, um, I would be remiss in thanking, uh, the mayor who, um, I called, and I, our area has a lot of flooding on the eastern side of Birmingham. And, uh, so we had cars basically stuck on Five Mile Road. And, but there was a gentleman that called and he was in another part of the district and whole basement just gone. And so I do want to thank you for coming, um, and acknowledging the work of the city and, and all of its employees, because one of the employees was at this person's house and I think I saw him a little early, but I'm still gonna give him, uh, his due, uh, is, is, um, one of the Public Works employees, and I don't think I quite see him. But nevertheless, I was very impressed at, it was almost twelve o'clock at night and, uh, and that he was out, uh, assessing what was going on. So I, I thank you for acknowledging what our city has done. Uh, I think probably with two tornadoes in less than five years, we, we're almost getting to be a little expert at doing this thing now. But I do want to say to the folk in West End that, uh, I appreciate, uh, the council member who was out there, which is Council Robeson, Protem Robeson, uh, and the mayor and, and most of all, his staff. And I know a lot of people say, well, that's their job, that's fine, but always be thankful when people do their jobs. A lot of folk get checks, but that don't mean that they do their job. So thank you for acknowledging and recognizing that. And I really appreciate the mayor for, uh, for bringing you Charlie Williams, this gentleman I was talking about. I just didn't see him. But nevertheless, all of the Public Works employees, all the, the EMA, not only EMA, excuse me, but I'm saying Fire and Police, because they are a part of the first responders to any time something like this happens. So I just want to say thank you for acknowledging the work of our city.
Absolutely.
You got it. Thank you. You got it. Thank you. Thank you, Miss President.
Council Lloyd.
Yes, uh, Mr. Coker, let me thank you and certainly thank, uh, your staff and, uh, the city of Birmingham, uh, the Patriot Counselor and the mayor, um, for, uh, assisting our citizens in this devastation. Uh, but I did hear you say that, um, right now there is no resolve in terms of how individuals might access, uh, resources to, to try to help rebuild and, and those kinds of things. And so, and I guess my question is, is to the mayor. the mayor, I know they, uh, the church is taking up, uh, receiving donations, what have you, and I'm just wondering, how can people access those funds that have been raised, um, via the telethon or, and what have you? And I think Councilor Abbott asked last week about if there had been an assessment, and obviously, there have been an assessment now. And so you kind of know who exactly were affected by the storm. And so how do these people access the money, uh, that have been raised, and what mechanism or what processes are in place to ensure that, uh, we maximize our efforts in terms of what, you know, relief that they receive?
Right now, we're, Jim, uh, right now, we're working through, um, Hopewell Baptist Church. Uh, Councilor Robeson, along with County Commissioner, uh, Sandra Little Brown, is, uh, working closely with Reverend Rogers to, uh, raise funds, um, for that purpose. Um, um, there have been private donations, there, um, are plans in the works to have, uh, fundraisers to raise additional funds, and we're working with the church for the church to establish those funds, because, uh, most of those are private dollars that, uh, the church will have control of. And Councilor Robeson, you might want to speak to-
I, I do, man. Thank you, Councilor, uh, Hoyt, for raising that question. Commissioner, uh, Sandra Little Brown, I talked this morning. Uh, we are gonna sit down with Pastor Edward Rogers, Ed Hopewell, Missionary Baptist Church, uh, this afternoon, uh, to discuss, uh, how, uh, the funds will be released to support those in need. Uh, now, currently, as the mayor stated, we did receive private funds, uh, as it relates to the support, and, uh, there's been a committee established. Uh, actually, the Community Development Director, Mr. Cologne, I think a few attorneys will be serving, uh, on that committee, uh, to assess how we release these funds. And we're gonna assemble that meeting this afternoon with, uh, Commissioner Sandra Little Brown, uh, and Pastor Rogers to discuss that further. So, uh, that's a timely question, and I appreciate you, uh, bringing it forth, Councilor Hoyt. Thank you, Mayor.
Jim, did you want to add?
Uh, no, sir. I would, well, I would like to add that, uh, you also had many nonprofits involved, such as Red Cross, Seventh Day Adventist, United Way. Uh, I saw you on the scene that day. And, uh, they all are doing what they do very well, which is assist the people in need.
Ms. Pro Tem?
Yeah. Um, thank you, Jim. Good to see you again, and I appreciate the support of state EMA, um, and the assessment that's been done, uh, through the mayor's administration. And I do appreciate their efforts in trying to, uh, address the matters that are emergency matters, uh, as quickly as possible. Um, the SBA was out there yesterday, and to my understanding through that assessment, uh, there are some ways they can support the citizens in that area. Um, my concern is, a lot of citizens in that area would not be able to support some type of loan through SBA, and being able to pay an extensive loan or pay it off, uh, to help support the needs that are needed now. So, um, through that process, I, and Mayor, I'd like to, if we can, uh, convene sometime this week to see what kind of, uh, gap can we fill, uh, if we don't get the threshold met, uh, and the funds released, and really want to be proactive with you and, and working that effort and coordinate that effort, uh, just in case it might not happen. And so, uh, that way, we're probably ahead of the curve and can go ahead and, and get the proper support that's needed. Um, if there's emergency funds from the city, uh, other options that we could discuss, uh, to help support, uh, the citizens in southwest Birmingham and District Seven. So I want to see if that's possible, that we can probably meet here soon.
Yes, and, and we've already, uh, activated both our Community Development, uh, Department as well as PEP to, uh, look at, uh, what funds are available that we can shift to assist individuals should we not be able to meet, um, the federal threshold for FEMA to, to activate funds. So, uh, we're, we're looking at it on all different levels to, uh, make some arrangements to help the citizens in that area.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. President.
Councilor Abbott?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I never cease to be amazed at the reaction of our public safety and PEP and all of the other entities that help when there's a disaster. You know, Birmingham just really shines. Unfortunately, we've had a lot of experience, and, uh, the more experience you get, the, usually the better you get at your job. I think that something that is not ever mentioned, or at least I don't hear it, is the fact that people don't have insurance. Uh, renters' insurance is dirt cheap. There's no excuse for people not to have renters' insurance. Now, insurance on your house, if you're looking at the difference between buying insurance and eating, that's a big deal. But you can get high deductible insurance, and you have to think about the, um, risk that you're taking, that if your home is wiped off of its foundations and gone, and you have no insurance, then you're sitting there looking for help from wherever you can get it, and there may not be any help. That's just a fact, because public money can't always be given to help people who haven't made appropriate plans for, for disaster. So I think that that's something that everyone should be thinking about. If you don't have insurance, you need to at least look into it, because there is a danger in Birmingham. We've seen more tornadoes lately than I care to think about, and we were sitting down in the basement on Christmas Day, because everyone was afraid the tornado was coming to get them. So we were some of those people. Uh, but renters' insurance, there's just really not much excuse for not having it, because it's very inexpensive. And, uh, but in, insurance is an important thing to have. And if you just sit and think about the value of your home and what you're gonna do when you don't have one anymore, it becomes more significant. And I think that's something that needs to be said, because every time we have a disaster, it turns out that half the people who are affected didn't have insurance. And I think that we need to start thinking about those issues. So, thank you.
Can I interject, Ms. President? Yeah, Councilor Abbott, you're right on point. Uh, uh, that's what the Project Hopewell is there for. Uh, that's why we're collecting funds, uh, both privately and publicly, to help support the efforts and the gap for those that don't have insurance. Uh, those discussions have taken place, and so, uh, we're just trying to see what areas of voids there are as relates to those citizens that might not have insurance or can't play, pay the deductible on a, on a claim, which could be five hundred thousand, fifteen hundred dollars, and help fill the gap with the funds that we're raising now. So that's, uh, that's timely also, and, uh, those discussions are ongoing. Thank you.
And, Ms. President, there's a, um, there's a goal that the state has to meet in order to trigger federal funding. And, Jim, do you know what that figure is? I've, I've heard six point seven or seven million.
It runs between six point seven and eight million.
And then there's, there's also a county requirement that we have to meet a certain threshold. I don't know if there's a city requirement, I think it's just at the county level.
No, sir. It's all county. Yes, sir.
We're about a million dollars short of being able to reach that county goal. And, uh, I would ask people, even if you were not in the area that was hit by the tornado, if you have flood damage, if you have wind damage, any kind of damage that occurred from that system that came through here, please notify us through our three-one-one system and either ask for Community Development or PEP, so we can add those, um, damages into our collective damages to meet the goal necessary to trigger federal funding. Um, if you've had trees knocked down, if you, if, if, uh, power, whatever damage you received on that evening, we need to know about it. And, uh, even if you have insurance, we still need to know about it, so we can factor that, uh, in, into our ability to meet the federal guidelines. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Councilor Tyson?
I also wanted to, uh, let everyone know, it's, uh, if you're a veteran and you was, uh, affected by the, uh, storm, that is money out there for veterans also. You have, and I can give you, if you call my office at two-five-four-two-three-fifty-eight, I can give you that number, um, and you actually qualify for that. If you served one day in the military and you got an honorable discharge, you qualify for that, for those fundings also.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Today, in the East Room of the White House, the President will announce new executive actions to reduce gun violence and make our community safer. Over the past decade in America, more than one hundred thousand people have been killed as a result of gun violence, and millions more have been victim, victims of assaults, robberies, and other crimes involving guns. Many of these crimes were committed by people who never should have had, uh, should have had the ability to purchase or acquire a gun in the first place. As a society, we must do something. In Birmingham, we're tired of losing lives to gun violence. Uh, the executive order is very simple. Uh, keep guns out of the wrong hands through background checks, make our community safer, uh, from, uh, gun violence, increase mental health treatment and reporting to, uh, the background check system for individuals with mental health issues, uh, to keep them from acquiring, uh, guns, to shape the future of gun safety technology. Uh, this morning, I've asked Chief Roper to come forward and just tell us a little bit about the impact, uh, that each one of us, um, can have and are being affected by, uh, gun violence in our community. Chief?
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
To the mayor, president, Pro Tem, to the councilors and the citizens. Uh, I just simply stand before you, underscoring our support for the President's executive actions to reduce gun violence and make our community safer. And as you're fully aware, we've seen and experienced a heartbreak here in Birmingham. You've seen the stories. And as I speak with police chiefs from all over the nation, we're all facing the same challenges when it comes to gun violence. But we also can't forget the number of suicides, accidental deaths, uh, injuries that are all attributed to people having guns. And so the President has really outlined a pragmatic plan, uh, I think it's reality-based. Uh, and as the mayor mentioned, the first key is to keep guns out of the hands of, of people who shouldn't have them in the first place through background checks. And we've all received the neighborhood complaints of people shooting in neighborhoods, and I appreciate it when you all forward those to me, and we try to act on every single complaint. But we've got to do more on the front end to keep the guns out of hands of people who shouldn't have them in the first place. And then we've got to hold the, uh, violators accountable. And so the President's plan covers that. And second, making our community safer from gun violence. One of the key components there is he's pushing to hire additional two hundred ATF agents. And we strongly support that push, because we would love to have some additional ATF agents assigned here in Birmingham, so that they can do a better job of enforcing the federal gun laws and also tracking those guns. And then thirdly, increase mental health treatment and reporting, uh, to the background check system. Uh, he's proposing about five hundred million dollars towards that. And I think it's key that we really sync up all of the different agencies to make sure that we're doing a good job of treating and reporting, uh, regarding the mental health issues. And then finally, uh, when we talk about this gun safety piece, uh, we've seen it here in Birmingham, where we've had kids accidentally, uh, find a gun that a parent or someone left, uh, and it was accessible, and the kid fires that gun, and someone loses their life. So we think it's a, a great plan. We strongly support it. And there is no doubt that we, as a police department, we can't be everywhere and we can't do everything. But when we sync up the different levels of government and we all work together as stakeholders, we can do a better job of making our community safer. So thank you so much.
And, and let me just add that the chief is working very closely with, uh, our religious community, as well as, uh, various federal and local agencies, uh, to implement programs and plans. You know, oftentimes, we don't talk about the things that are being done, uh, behind the scenes to try to have an impact. But, but rest assured, uh, the chief, uh, the senior staff of our police department, as well as other cooperating agencies are very cognizant of this problem, and we're working to address it, uh, through direct, uh, efforts of our police department, as well as use of technology, uh, in order to combat, uh, gun violence in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Mr. President?
Councilor Hoyt?
Chief, let me, uh, thank you for, um, your efforts. And it's not an easy task or easy job. Um, but I think I would be dearly, if I didn't mention, um, the overage of celebratory shooting that took place, uh, this, this New Year. It was outrageous. I think I shared that email with you and the mayor and a couple of others. Um, and it's, you know, it's almost like was, like Beirut. You know, it was this, I, I, I couldn't understand it, because this is not New Year's Eve. Of course, it was terrible, too. But New Year's night, and even Saturday night, um, they were still shooting. You know, and these were no look guns. And my wife said to me the other day, and this is why I'm concerned, is because, um, you know, they're damaging people's property. Because I looked up in my living room, and she said, uh, what is this here? You know, it looked like some, you know, I got a new roof on there. But it looked like it's, it might be leaking because of these guns. You know, because when the bullets go up, they come down with the same velocity. And so, um, you know, we just, you know, I don't know what, I don't know the answer. But I think, you know, we have to, it's got to be something. I mean, you know, um, when we have a game, we have an increase in officers. Well, you know, New Year's is coming. We ought to have an increased presence, not riding around, but, you know, stationary in our neighborhoods, because it's going to happen. And, you know, we can't put a spot side, what is it, uh, shot spotter everywhere. But I do believe you can anticipate folk gonna shoot their guns. And perhaps we can, uh, do as we do with guns. We arm up, give overtime to folk, and let them, because we need to be safe. I mean, those, those bullets don't have any, any, any eyes on them.
Yes, sir.
And so I'm just, you know, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm at wits.
Yes, sir.
And it's hard for me, and I've been victimized more than I really care, that, you know, I'd be like Councilor Tyson, if I talk about it, I get teary all over again, because I've been victimized as a counselor. And my family's been victimized by this, this, you know, this violence, this gun, all this stuff. Folks breaking in your house, all this stuff. And, you know, and it's got to be an answer, you know. And I know you all doing all you can, but I'm just saying, we got to do something different.
Uh, yes, sir. So let me, let me speak about New Year's Eve first, and that won't take up too much time. But, uh, we started an operation four or five years ago regarding celebratory gunfire. So we had a strong contingent of officers in the streets on New Year's Eve. And we assigned those officers based on previous reports of, of gun shots and those types of things. So actually, gunfire on New Year's Eve has come down every year for the last three or four years. Still too much, but it's coming down every year, because we are working it extremely hard. We're putting officers on overtime. We have different task forces out there. So we are doing that. Still need to make more progress. We still have too many people who think it's the right thing to do to go out there and shoot bullets in the air. So regardless of, of how much we get on the news and talk about it, we even, and we don't even talk about this, we even go into the neighborhoods where we have a lot of gunfire prior to New Year's Eve, and we hang out door flyers saying, this neighborhood, you've had gunfire, it's illegal, we're gonna have an increased presence here. So we're doing all types of things. Still need to have more progress. Still need more citizens to say, we're not gonna tolerate it on our street. So Joe, you get out here and shoot every year, but you're not gonna shoot this year, because we're gonna call the police on you, because we need the citizens to be our eyes and ears. So we look forward to working with you as a body even more so in the future, because there's still a lot more work to do. We recognize that and, uh, look forward to the partnership.
Chief?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Uh, I wanted to, uh, say, why do we don't have a shot spotter over on the western south town like in West End and Pavilly? Because of the, uh, the problems that we, I'm really, I just basically tell you the truth. I'm, I'm getting to the point that I'm afraid to, I want to purchase me a gun. And I know how to handle a gun.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I was trained. But you're just about scared to just live in a house without one, with people kicking in your doors, trying to come in your house on you while you in there. You know, and I've been, uh, like, uh, Councilman Hart, my house has been broken in several times. And then it's, now, speaking of these crazy folks running around here, uh, threatening you and, and, and carrying on. But we really need a shot spotter over there, and I think if we start holding some of these landlords that's, that's, oh, these apartment complexes, you can go out there and see the bullets on their property. Start finding them, they'll get some, rid of some of these tenants in H-A-B-D. Go through there, you find bullet shells everywhere. They need to start kicking these folks out. I, if you, it's, you should be able to get some fingerprints off this stuff, because you can go through any of them. Right after New Year's, bullet shells everywhere. These are apartment complexes, bullet shells everywhere. We gotta be able to hold these people accountable for this. And it's all in these low-income areas that these, this is happening. I've got to get- I've gotta get my roof repaired because of a bullet, um, that happened over the new year. And I know that's what it is. So it, it, we just, we gotta do something better, and I know y'all doing everything you can, but I really would like to see how we can get a shot spotter over there because it's really getting really bad.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we need more of it, and so the system works well. And so through the mayor's office, we don't mind, uh, getting estimates on what it would cost to expand it. And, and we can do that.
Mr. President?
Mr. President, my name is, uh...
Thank you, um, chief, and I, I wanna ditto as well that we do appreciate the work, um, that you're doing along with the Birmingham Police Department. Um, I will say, because, uh, obviously the eastern side of Birmingham, the largest populated district in the city, is now oblivious to gunfire either. In fact, uh, it was so loud, but probably, maybe unlike some others, I'm gonna call and you know that. I have no problem with it. Um, and I'm hoping that, Mayor, what will happen is especially being that we have this governmental affairs committee, that we can partner with the mayor's office by way of the police department. And what I mean by that is that a lot of times we don't know your needs. You know, we can, it's easy to kinda pick out what it is that you're not doing, but, uh, we need to figure out what it is that you need. I'm interested, uh, cause I told Counselor Tyson this, I said that, uh, you know, I thought the east and west, I know I heard east, but the west side also had shot spotters. I'm interested in getting those kind of reports, uh, because of the fact that as neighbors, we got to take charge of our own communities. And then what I'm hoping that will happen, Mayor, is that some of this, this, where we need to talk more directly to you, because as a council member, you know what's happening in your neighborhood at the time. I don't wanna be in fear like I'm always texting out a directive, just a friendly ask. And the folks are shooting outside. Or I know of some things where seniors are locked in their community because of the fact they're selling dr- uh, drugs. And then you got all of this kinda gunfire beyond, talking about celebratory. I mean, over there in Kingston, uh, I was telling, um, uh, Council of the Patriot Council member, uh, when we talked about this before, I mean, you know, they selling drugs in broad daylight. So the police can't do that on their own, it's gonna take folks talking. But council members that want to help, we don't want that inhibition for us to help. Cause some things that we can find out, they're not gonna tell the police, and of course you know that, uh, chief, cause they got to live there after the fact. And so what I'm hoping, Ms. President, being that when we go into this next budget, that chief, whatever those needs are, that you communicate that with the mayor since that is who you report to, uh, and so that we know adequately, we don't wanna see it on the news, "You need another car." We want, we wanna know that upfront going into the budget. You need cars, you need officers, you need, uh, bulletproof vests, whatever it is that you need. We wanna know that upfront. Because as the community becomes more challenging, we got to meet the challenge. You don't run away from it, and I think that that's what people fail to realize. We're the largest city in the state of Alabama. And yet, we wanna use the term urban, but you, you are mostly African-American populated or brown populated. And we have issues, okay, that goes beyond color. But color seems to be the issue. So we need to make sure that you're fully funded this year. Do whatever it takes, chief, to empower you to be able to do your job. Because I want people to be just like they do in other communities, where they almost scared to play loud music. Now that's what I'm looking for the day of, and, 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 and you got my commitment as this council member, I'm gonna help you to do it. All I want is, Mr. Chief, if, if, uh, you can give us, uh, a, a comprehensive report, you know, nothing different than you would give to the mayor, but share with the council so we're more educated on what is taking place. We hear it, but we don't know. And then when we go to these neighborhood association meetings, we can be able to intelligently share information and really be there to support the officers who are coming there to talk about what's happening in the neighborhood. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and I appreciate you, not trying to put you on the spot, but I know that we've been talking about action plans and all of that, but you need all of us on deck to be able to help you to come up with a plan too. If you had all the answers, you wouldn't need us, and we wouldn't need you, so we need each other. Thank you, Ms. President, but I look forward to that coming up, uh, and that really becoming a conversation for the budget cycle this year, that we start dealing with these problems head-on. And I know you can't just throw money at it, but I'm not stupid either. You do have to have money to pay for the services that you require. Thank you, Ms. President.
Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, chief, I would just like to ask, because we had a lot of gunfire in my neighborhood, and I actually thought about going and driving towards the places where I heard the gunfire, and then I thought, no, that doesn't seem very smart. I think I'll just stay in the house and wait for the bullet to come through my roof. But there was a gentleman visiting on New Year's who actually was standing next to his car, and a bullet fell from the sky and went through the roof of his car. Now that's getting pretty scary. And, but the question that I have is, I know Glenn Iris is not gonna get a shots, uh, shot spotter. I know that. But what I want to know is, even if you have a shot spotter, don't, don't the police have to witness a person doing something in order to arrest them? So how, how does the shot spotter help you to catch these people if they've already done the shooting? How does that work?
Well, the way the system works, it works like an auditory GPS. So the same way your GPS system works in the car, it triangulates auditory, so it triangulates sound. So it's what it does. So when someone shoots a gun or even fireworks, the sensors triangulates the sound and then sends that location to the police department. We're then able to dispatch an officer, and we have now even, there's something else we're doing with it that I don't wanna talk about publicly, but we're ea- we're able to dispatch an officer much quicker. So that means we can catch the person in the act, uh, more likely to catch them in the act. Uh...
Use that room.
The, the, we cover about six square miles right now. And like I mentioned earlier, we need more coverage.
Yeah, cause the city of Birmingham is a hundred and fifty square miles, and you're only able to cover six.
Yes, ma'am.
So how many do we need, though?
Seven. Well, I just wondered, you know, how, if they've already done the shooting, how you catch them? You can find all the bullet casings out on the ground, but you don't know who did the shooting.
Yes, what some criminals are doing, because we have, through the years, we have really financed, finessed and enhanced the way we're doing it now. So where they used to just stand there on the corner and just shoot, 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 now they know we're coming. So it's like chasing ghosts at times. They'll step out on the porch in the front yard, shoot real quick, and then run back in the house. Because they know we're coming, we're coming. And so, and so now we've got to strategize around that because we don't have as many people just standing there, just shooting for thirty minutes because they know we are coming, and we're gonna do everything we can to put them in jail. And so i- i- it's gonna take a, a comprehensive effort. And so the police department, we're in the fight, we're in it. But as we continue to attend neighborhood meetings and all of those, getting more citizens involved, uh, having more connectivity in our, in our neighborhoods where everyone knows each other, there are strong neighborhood watch programs, our goal is to try to make sure through the course of the year, and we're tracking it now, so it's a metric for me, how many viable neighborhood watch programs do we have? Notice I said viable. So not just two people, but how many viable programs do we have? How many business watch programs do we have? And what do we need to do as a police department to make sure we're doing the things we need to do, to make sure they're resourced and connected? Because where there are strong neighborhoods, where there are strong community, crime can't stay there. Because neighbors are looking out for neighbors. Uh, in my neighborhoods where we don't have that sense of community, we have more crime there. And so I think it's gonna be an amazing year. Uh, we've brought crime down just about every year over the last five to six years. We know we had a spike, uh, an increase in homicides last year, but I've spoken to about thirty chiefs in the last three weeks, and we're not alone. It's all over the nation. But I think this year's gonna be a good year for, so I look forward to, uh, working with the, the mayor and, and everyone to, to make sure we're doing what we need to do.
Thank you.
President Austin?
Counselor Tyson?
And what, uh, can you give us a price on how much would it cost for a shot spotters around the city? And how do you determine, how did you determine the shot spotters that is up? How did you determine that they got them? Because I know the western, uh, side of town is the OK Corral, and I just don't understand how we didn't get one.
Oh, yes, ma'am, there's more on the west side of town than anywhere else.
There's one, not one in West End.
Yes, ma'am, there's more on the west side, and, and we've never identified the exact locations, but we have more on the west side than, than any other location, any, any other precinct. Uh, the way we did it years ago, and the system was purchased with a federal grant, uh, the way we did it years ago, we looked at where we were having the most shootings, and we prioritized that. So those areas were the ones that got the systems that we have. So when you look at costs, it depends on if you're adding on to a location where we're already in existence, it's a little cheaper, cause you just add on to it. But if you're gonna put the system somewhere out here where there's no other system to connect to it, it's gonna cost us more. And so, uh, as I mentioned earlier, I don't mind, I don't mind coming up with some prices and, and work those through the mayor's office.
But West End, Tidusville, Mason City, uh, and Pally do not have one cause the police officers told us we didn't have one. And if we can get a price on that, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. President?
Thank you, Ms. President, and Mayor, you can time this discussion, uh, any better. The president right now is having his, uh, uh, con- press conference, executive action on guns, and I was listening to Chief Roper and kinda watching it at the same time for the day as for you all out there. But, uh, he did state there are thirty thousand, uh, gun-related killings in America annually. And that's through suicide, that's through domestic violence, and that's through gang, uh, gang activity. So this is something that's prevalent across the country. Um, it's unfortunate this morning in your previous, uh, professional endeavors in the city of Hoover. Uh, we had a shooting of a thirty-three-year-old in, in Lake Cyrus in Hoover. So this is happening everywhere, ladies and gentlemen. And so, uh, chief, we are here to support you in those endeavors. I do agree with you, it's more comprehensive than just the Birmingham Police Department. I think it involves, uh, what Counselor Tyson was touching on, with abandoned buildings, code enforcement, other departments to come together and help support those efforts to reduce violence, uh, neighbors being neighbors, community policing, uh, you know, clergy getting involved, all that. And it's definitely gonna take the community at whole, but I just wanted to say that, uh, Mayor, you timed this out perfectly to have this discussion today because that announcement, executive orders taking place as we speak. Thank you, Ms. President.
Ms. President? Thank you, Ms. President. Well, let me just say this, and, and I, I know because, uh, I, I saw the cameras turning in the back, so I'm gonna try to guard my tongue. Let, let me just say this, while I know we have this problem nationwide, I am a Birmingham city councilor, which means Birmingham has been on the news at least once a day, if not every other day, about a homicide or some kind of crime committed. That's why I'm talking about empowering what the Birmingham Police Department is doing. It doesn't make us look good as a city, that every time you look around, there is a murder, there's a homicide, there's a homicide, which is equivalent to murder, there's a robbery, there's a lot of things that's happening in the city. And, and to be very candid with you, uh, we have been ranked, you can tell me if I'm wrong, we have been ranked by the FBI as number five in the nation for crime. Well, you know, is that right, chief?
No, ma'am. Uh, let, let, let me talk about that.
Go ahead, chief.
Then I sit down, let me clear up this, this misconception regarding these rankings. Birmingham used to be on three crime lists. Total crime, homicides, and violent crime. We were off the total crime list now.
Good.
We were off the homicide list now, and we were still on the violent crime list. But the FBI clearly says in the numbers, do not use these numbers to compare, to rank any cities. Because the FBI has acknowledged that you're ranking apples and oranges. I was just reading an article the other day, a large city here in the nation that I won't even call their name. The way they count assaults, I'd be ashamed to count assaults like that. So we're counting things that some cities don't count. Because the rules for reporting aren't near as clear as they ought to be. So when, and, and so these books, these magazines will come out with some ranking, and they'll say, "Well, Birmingham's number five in violent crime." Then when we dig in, cause we dig in as, as an administration, we dig in, and we said, "You know what, if I took those thousand crimes off our list, like they have, we wouldn't be on the list either." And so the, the whole ranking thing is, is a farce. It's a farce. And so, uh, and so as a police department, we're working extremely hard, and we have some amazing citizens out there who don't deserve what's being done to them with this perception and these rankings things because they're not accurate. And the people who collect the numbers are the FBI, and they say, "Don't use these numbers like that." Because this sit over here is not even reporting assaults, this sit over here is not even reporting this other thing. And so we report everything. And so now when I say that, I'm not saying we don't have our challenges, because we do, we all know that. But what I'm saying is, some of that ranking stuff is, is, is not accurate and, uh, and it's not true to form. And the FBI themselves say clearly on the, on, on the crime stat list, don't use these for rankings.
And you know, and you know what, uh, uh, chief, uh, Ms. President, do you mind if I have an additional minute, please? Cause I didn't wanna...
And, and Counselor, uh, before you continue, let me just say, going back to what, um, Pro Tem Robeson indicated, uh, the chief and the mayor's office is in direct, um, contact with the White House. One of the biggest issues that we face is how incidences are reported. And some cities don't report, uh, all of the information that we report as a municipality. So it skews the information that we receive. And what we've asked, um, the Justice Department through the FBI and other organizations is to come up with some uniform plan that all cities can be measured, uh, properly and accurately.
Well, Ms. President, and with, with that having said, chief, here's how I believe that the council, as well as the mayor and his staff, can be helpful to the Birmingham Police Department. That means that we have to tell our own story, and we have to put out our own press release instead of talking about cellphone charges. We need to talk about that, how we're doing in this city in comparison to some other cities. That's how you take away or eradicate the perception. Because again, a lot of times, we always say we talk about the media, but, you know, five o'clock is one of the highest paid, five and six o'clock news is one of the highest paid at times. You know why? Cause folk like to look at the news, even though they talk about the news. And say the news don't do this, then, but they sure watch it, right? And I said that ebonically for a reason, because that's all that I'm saying, chief. Then we got to rewrite the story. We gotta help you, if you, you in the crime fighting business, you don't have time to do no PR and carry on. But I think if Ms. Odom and our folk got on it, uh, Mr. President, uh, and we start telling the story, and then you got ten ambassadors, you got the mayor throughout the city, and then you got council members who wanna talk about what is being done, cause other than that, we don't have that information. Uh, if it doesn't come from the administration, the council doesn't have the adequate information to go out here and diffuse some of this stuff, you understand? So that helps us, uh, chief, when we can have, uh, uh, access to the information that whatever is distributed, if we can have it, and I'm one that I will actually have my staff to stay late so we can run off stuff to give to the neighborhoods. If they have it, they'll, they can respect that. So, Ms. President, I think that that'd be something else that we can see what we can do to help the mayor and help, uh, our police chief, uh, in regard to some things, cause this year, I'm telling you, chief, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm with you. If, if, uh, if we gonna have to do some prayer walking and some talking and everything else that we need to do, uh, because we don't want folks to feel comfortable to commit crime in Birmingham. We want them to feel real uncomfortable trying to carjack women while they sitting at a traffic light. We want them to feel real uncomfortable, and it's gonna take all of us being committed. Uh, in fact, that's what I was telling someone at our end on this, Ms. President. They said, "Well, how do you move the city forward?" Easily, you take away options. We gonna get along, cause we gonna get along, just that simple. And that's the way we do, by helping you to do what needs to be done and to make sure that our communities feel safe. And then we gonna eradicate some of this foolishness that we put out here to the media about our own city, and then start telling some of the good things that we have been able to accomplish. Uh, but I'd be interested, chief, in, in that report. So Mayor, if we can have your authorization for the chief to provide it to us, or your office to provide it to us, that helps the council so we can better help the Birmingham Police Department. that helps the council so we can better help the Birmingham Police Department. Thank you, Ms. President.
And actually, Chief Roper, I was gonna read a Facebook post from my neighbor from New Year's Eve. It said, "What a night, got an alarm code at twelve oh eight AM for a den glass break. Cameras recorded movement event, but no activity. Got home in less than eight minutes, checked out the house and found no problems. Police wa- walked the perimeter and everything looked good. After they left and I walked into the den, I stepped on a nine-millimeter slug." Idiots. What goes up must come down. First New Year's Eve, we haven't been home in over ten years and it landed three feet from where I would have been sitting, or it could have been hit, it could have hit me if I'd been walking to the dining room. Now, my son for the last four years and my daughter before that spends every New Year's Eve on the west side of town. They have a church group that has a lock-in. And this year especially, they sat around in the den and talked about the gunfire. Now, I go to bed at nine o'clock on New Year's Eve, mainly because my house is empty and I can't. Um, but I always wake up five minutes to eleven. And I do hear the fireworks, I know they're illegal, but it is a celebration, so I don't freak out over that. But then I hear the gunfire. The one thing that bothers me the most when people talk to me about this, this gunfire that they hear, they never call the police. They just hear it. If you don't call, there's no record. And when you want a shot spotter, if you don't have those records in, that residents have been calling in about hearing shots. It doesn't matter if if you know where it comes from, and it doesn't matter if you might think it could be the backfire of a car or a firecracker or a stupid little snap and pop. And I've been hearing those a lot lately too, mainly in my living room. Um, but uh, you call the police, you call nine-one-one every single time and give them a general idea of what you heard and a general idea of what it comes from, because that report is what gives you the information you need to do what you need to do in the police department. And I wanted to thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. This time, I'd like to uh ask Bishop Calvin Woods to come up. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, I indicated that he would be back to give us a report about on um on MLK Day, Martin Luther King Day. Bishop?
Thank you, Brother Mayor, to President Council, one of the council members, brothers and sisters. I'm delighted to be here. I think I've been coming up here longer than anybody I see in here. I remember when the police didn't have anything but rigged cars, they didn't have any phones in them. And after they got other cars, they would have to go to a phone booth uh to call in. And uh, I'm thrilled in my soul when I can see such a rainbow of people sitting here. We used to be afraid to come up here, been beaten in the streets and all of that. We didn't have a good chief like we have now. Police used to beat us for trying to come do certain things. But uh, this city's been born again and God has brought us a mighty, mighty long ways. And Mayor, please let me say this, one while it looked like I wouldn't be here this year. Since this time, the mayor let me come up last year, I've had two strokes. I've had triple heart bypass. Matter of fact, I've been in the hospital four times this past year. Had to learn how to talk, had to learn how to walk again, couldn't do anything. So God certainly brought me back from the dead, gave me another opportunity to stay with you just a little while longer. So that's, this city has been born again. We have our problems, but God has brought us from a mighty long ways. It took strong prayer, love and dedication, the marches were fine. But in all your ways, we had to acknowledge the Lord and keep prayer, don't be ashamed of that. He said, "If you be ashamed on me before men, I'll be ashamed on you before my Father, which is in heaven." Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Holiday Celebration Calendar of Events, presented by the Birmingham Metropolitan Chapter of SCLC in the city of Birmingham. Next Tuesday, if if the mayor keeps same mind he got, uh, been doing every year. Uh, we'll be up here with our board to receive a proclamation for Dr. King's work in his organization. It's going on through me and you all too. This is part of the dream uh that he had, to receive a proclamation. Uh, Sunday, uh, January the sixth, Saturday, January the sixteenth, from noon, from nine to noon, we have uh our annual gun buyback. We'll pay up to fifty dollars for your guns. This is an effort to reduce, help reduce the crime rate as Dr. King was the apostle of love and non-violence. Now, this will be held at the Saint Joseph Baptist Church in Smithville, where it's been held for many, many years, five hundred Ninth Avenue North. That same Saturday, sixteenth, beginning at two o'clock, we have a youth extravaganza. Youth from around the city would be engaged in activities geared in achieving Dr. King's, I've got vision down here, we call it a dream, but I like to talk about them visions too, about the same thing. It'll be held at Abbot Senior Baptist Church, address twenty-three oh one Avenue E. Enslie. Uh, Dr. R. L. Patterson is the pastor. Uh, we're gonna have a great time, we're gonna have great activities and we're gonna feed them after that. Sunday, January the seventeenth, three PM, uh, we will be presenting a drama, drama called Boom in Ham, directed by Mr. Brandon Watson. And it will be held at the Zion Star Baptist Church that addresses two fifty-four Third Avenue Southwest. Talk about the struggle and what we went through and how God has brought us forward. Monday, January eighteenth, beginning at seven thirty, the annual uh unity breakfast that we all uh know so much about. And on that same day, Monday, at uh nine AM, the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute open up. Uh, that came about as a result of the struggle here in Birmingham. Ten o'clock to eleven o'clock, wreath laying ceremony sponsored by Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, college students and officials, uh, and Kelly Ingram Park at the statue of Dr. Martin Luther King. Now, twelve noon on the eighteenth, Dr. King's day, we will have the traditional march that we've been having uh for many years. And uh, it will take place here, we're lined up at eleven o'clock right out there at the city hall. We used to have a problem getting up here. The reason we started marching from here, because we feel an ownership now. We can come up here, we're not marching against it to come up here like we'd lay down in the street and coming all that. But we're marching from here down to Sixteenth Street Baptist Church, church that suffered more, church that served as a dynamic and a great servant, where we'll be having uh the traditional annual rally. We're gonna have a dynamic time down there at that time. We'll leave Sixteenth Street Baptist Church at two o'clock and go up to upstairs in the city auditorium, uh, where we will be having uh our annual uh love feast for senior citizens and senior citizens. We've served up to seven hundred people. Uh, the fellowship, just getting together and loving one another and breaking bread together means so much. There was a time we wanted to do that, uh, we, our minds just were on other things of that nature. And I I wanted to say this, Brother, Dr. Robeson, you still gonna get the bands for us?
Uh, Bishop, you you ordered me to do so. So I'm gonna make sure we have all the bands there.
You're growing, you're growing.
It's done, we're growing it and I'm trying to take the march to a parade.
Acknowledge I'm old enough for your gratitude.
You are.
I know y'all take a lot from you.
And you remarried and you're happy again, right?
All right. I didn't go to do that, Mayor. The mayor had me on a program, we had the ambassador uh from Israel. And he was kind enough to recognize the President SCLC for remarks. And I made remarks and spirit jumped on me and I gave one of those squalls. I know I embarrassed him right there. I don't try to do that when I worked at Parker, that's when I retired. Spirit started working on me and I started doing that in the hall and and, you know, in in rooms and things. And so, I thought it was time for me to go on and retire. Thank you very much, may God bless you, keep on praying for me. I appreciate your prayers, uh, love one another, now look at each other and tell them you love them. Y'all, Mayor, you let me to say this, y'all tell each other you love them, everybody. You are God's husbandry, you're the work of God's hand. Servants of God, you represent God, you represent love. What does love look like? Love look like you when you doing God's business, loving one another, respecting one another. And you you got to keep on living and be able to say, if you're not saying it, for me to live is Christ. Christ was a servant. He came to set the captives free and do anything. Paul said, "For me to live is Christ." For you to live is Jesus Christ when he's living in you. Thank you very kindly, Brother.
Thank you, Bishop, uh, that's all I have at this time. Counselor Tyson and Counselor Skels.
Yes, I have some requests uh for the mayor. Uh, constituents in Mason City uh complained about during the tornado, they didn't hear the siren going off. Uh, went to the, um, I had several calls saying that they didn't hear it. And I actually went to the neighborhood meeting yesterday and they uh also um said that they didn't hear it also then. And I was looking at, um, went up to uh Cooper Green and the uh, right there on Gloria and 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 Flora Street leading to the Cooper Green Park, the people live on that street, uh, asked, could they get sidewalks uh put in the want, the little bit they had repaired because children are actually walking in the street from school. And they had one accident up there uh with one of the uh the uh first graders. So they are very concerned about that street. And you know, the kids just don't have anywhere else to walk but in the street. And they wanted to see about getting something done about that. That's the end of my request.
Counselor Skels?
Excuse me, Ms. President, uh, Mr. Mayor, we have uh several beautification points that uh public works uh throughout the years and we've put money there, as a matter of fact, um, in terms of of flowers and different things of that nature. But I've looked at those uh uh beautification points and I can tell you exactly where they are. Uh, and I'll make sure that we reduce this to writing as well. Uh, and and uh, and they need to be cleaned and and put back together again. They just don't look good, just to make a long story short. Uh, and and we allocated, I know last fiscal year, eight thousand dollars, particularly around those neighborhood signs uh in District One, and they do need to be cleaned up. The parkway, I noticed they've been changing it out a little bit, but uh, we really just need better flowers and just, it just needs to look like we we we're doing something big over there. And we're willing to pay for it, to be able, meaning put our public improvement funds behind it in order to get that done. The other thing that, Mayor, that I wanna request, because I noticed on uh the entire stretch along Marlin Springs Road, Marlin Springs intersect at the um um at right there on Carson Road, and the right-of-ways still have not been cut to date. Uh, we've also gotten something from one of the residents over in Spring Lake, that from Springville Road, which leads to Old Springville Road to Twin Lake Drive, that the trash, for some reason, is not being picked up uh on a regular basis. And we have turned that into public work, so if we can do that, that would be wonderful, uh, to get back on schedule and to get the neighborhoods back cleaned up because they do take care of their yards. One other thing, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to bring to your attention, has to do with thrift store. We have reported it, uh, Mr. Ron Kidd went out and inspected it and everybody knows it's a dump. But this thrift store has been taken over by a brand-new company. And uh, if you are traveling along Springville Road, right across from Springville Landing Apartments, you will see nothing but garbage. Uh, I don't even see why they would even try to recycle to sell these kind of items uh in the in the neighborhood. But I'm telling you, it looks filthy. Uh, and, Mr. Mayor, if you can have the inspector to go back out and to find these folk, because they'll clean it and then they'll come back and they'll leave it in a worse shape than it was before. So it's a thrift store right off of Springville Road, is in in that little shopping center uh where you have Save-A-Lot and all of that. Uh, so I I need your help on that, Mr. Mayor, and I really appreciate it. Uh, Ms. President, that's all I have that I can think of at this time. Uh, and I'll probably be coming back with some other requests. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for obliging to listen to me. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, leadership. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I wanna thank your office for allowing uh PEP to uh address the issues on the flooding on the Pratt Highway. We had uh father and son lose their life um in an accident a few weeks back. And during the flooding, we had people uh moving the barricades, trying to continue to drive through, getting their trucks and cars uh stuck uh in the water uh that was overflowing. We found out through the diligent work of Mr. Andre Bittas, uh, having met with Norfolk Southern, Birmingham Terminal Railroad, CSX, ADEM, and Aldott on this particular site over near Ross Neely uh on the Pratt Highway, right off of Highway seventy-eight where the water tanks are, uh, that the flooding is being caused by a blocked ninety-six-inch pipe underneath one of the CSX tracks. We know that the railroad had brought their equipment in. And what we're asking going forward is that there's some type of um plan put in place for safety and guard rail, that the road be repaved, uh, that the markers along that road um be clearly identified. If um if all these agencies are working together, can they all work together for a plan after the pipe is fixed so that we don't have this again? Uh, the water was threatening Highway seventy-eight um and it's flooding. And we just wanna, if we could, get an update from Mr. Bittas uh around this, if possible.
Yes, Counselor, we've been working with uh CSX on getting this pipe cleared. What happened is that the water was so high on their, around their track, they started pumping water last week and they started pumping water to really find the pipe. But the water has receded since they started pumping and the water, you know, was relieved from the Pratt Highway. I think what's gonna happen is they're gonna find a blocking in the pipe like a beaver dam, something like that. So they're still working on that now. And hopefully, after they get that pipe fixed, we're meeting with them to make sure that they put some measures in place to prevent that pipe from blocking again. Uh, on the Pratt Highway, uh, flooding and also Jesper Road, we actually included that in the uh uh damage assessment. Uh, we sent that to EMA, so we're gonna include that as part of the repair work from from flood damage.
That's 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 thinking right there.
And that would include some obstacles, some barriers.
That'll get us where we need to be right there, Mayor. Yeah, outstanding, thank you, gentlemen.
Add two more, if it's okay. I wanted to bring this, uh, Mr. Mayor, to your attention as well, and and our park board commissioner, Parker, that um had a request from a church member in regard to Wyland Park and the fact that they desperately need lights over there. And um, and I told him that the mayor cares and certainly our commissioner cares about the children having access to being able to- to being able to do their Little League practices and so forth and with lights. And that I'd bring it up during council meeting. So Wileham Park, Mr. Commissioner, and Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind to oblige. One, what you want to respond?
I was going to address that if you don't mind.
Okay, can you let me make my second one?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Do all the addressing you want, okay. And my, oh, and thank you, Ms. Parker, you're very nice. Okay. And the other thing, Mr. Mayor, that I wanted to bring to your attention is about Martin Wood Drive. I know we've been waiting over ninety days about replacing this sign. It is a sign that they knocked down. I know Greg told me he was working on it and it really kind of was beyond him about whatever the machine, Mr. Mayor, that makes these street signs. But it still has not been replaced. And normally when I ask for something, I'm kind of like Mr. Patton. He said whenever he asks a question, he already know the answer. Well, I think that I'm just a little junior version of that too. So I looked at it last night and it's not there. And I'm just wondering, after three months of it being down, when are we going to get this machine just to put a street sign back up? It was knocked down by a motorist, obviously. And it has not been replaced. It's only one sign. And I mentioned to Mr. Dawkins respectfully, because I really care a lot for Greg. I did tell him that, and I didn't give no directive. But, you know, we need to hurry up and get the one sign back up there. Is Martin Wood Drive. At the intersection of Martin Wood Lane. See, the mayor taught me all that good stuff. He's such a wonderful teacher because he asked me, so where's the intersection? So now I'm looking for the intersection. Martin Wood Lane and Martin Wood Drive. But Martin Wood Drive is the sign that's not up. Pole is up, no sign. You got it. You're very kind. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, President. On eighteen thirty-seven, First Street South is flooding. And the drain is stopped up and it's actually coming all the way up to this senior citizen's step. And she would like for someone to please come out, it's an emergency to look at this problem. Fifteen thirty-two, Maple Avenue Southwest. This house, on each side of this house, I went out. I don't know whether they running a garage or fixing cars. It's cars packed in the yard, in the driveway. And this senior citizen, she has called this in. And I have reported it before, but nothing has been done over the two years that I have been in this seat. And she is just really tired of this. And she said before she leaves this earth, she would like to see these two houses on the side of her cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. President. I just wanted to respond back to Counselor Scales that about a week ago, Counselor Lundey and myself and members of the Park Board staff and also the mayor's office, we convened a meeting with some of the community stakeholders to start looking at Wileham Park. And we're actually supposed to report back to Counselor Lundey, I think, either on Friday or this upcoming Tuesday on some initial status assessments on it. So I think Wileham is going to be okay.
Does that mean they're going to get the lights in short order?
Once they finish the assessment, I'm sure that we'll...
And I think Counselor Lundey...
No, I mean, I just think that after we get the assessment, we had, I think we had a great meeting. And I think we'll be coming back, either, I think it's on Friday or next Tuesday, to convene again. And we'll be moving forward to address the needs of not only Wileham Park, but look, and we'll be talking more collectively with all of the council members, with the mayor, with the park board. And just on how do we move forward with Phase Two of the parks throughout the city of Birmingham? So I think it'll be a collaborative effort. And we've gotten the Birmingham Bowl out the way. So we'll be working with all the council members and everyone, make sure that we address the needs of the parks throughout the city. I think you'll be, I think you'll be, you'll be pleased with the action.
Mr. President, and the only other question that I would have is if Counselor Lundey, since he inherited this issue. If he can be told the status of the bond funds that were already probably allocated for it? So that he can appropriate, you know, funds in other areas? But if he could be brought up to snuff in terms of funds that may have already been appropriated for Wileham Park? Thank you, Ms. President.
Yes, well, it's the same complaint that I've had for the last, let's see, I've been on council for ten years now. It's Lake Warrior Road. It's now Oceanside Road. But it's a shame. And I think I said a couple of years ago, there was a Latina woman who had an accident because she had, you know, it froze. And had an accident. But she probably didn't know to contact the city because city responsible for her accident. And so I guess somebody has to get killed for somebody that deals with this issue of this drainage. And I'm tired of taking pictures. Talking about your Lockway. Well, I got Lake Warrior, no, Oceanside Road on Warrior Road. It's, I mean, it's, you know, it's ridiculous. But if this had been on the south side, it'd been dealt with. It'd have been, you know, when we had the flood and issue on Forty-first Street in your district, it got dealt with. And I've been complaining for the last ten years, this same place. Those who have served with me. All I want is the same kind of attention that these other places get. And I'm going to continue to raise the issue. But it's not fair. And when somebody sues the city because we have not done what we need to do. With respect to that, resolving that issue of the flooding and the stop, I mean, the backup there at that inlet. It's pathetic. But maybe if you had to drive home that way, you would, you know, it might get addressed. But that's the way I drive home. And it's a problem and it continues to be a problem. And I guess if somebody get killed, maybe you get something done. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Let's move to suspend the rules for our speakers. The move.
All opposed.
Good afternoon. Marilyn Mosley, twelve oh eight Seventeenth Street Southwest. I want to wish all of you counselors a Happy New Year. And the mayor and his staff, one of my favorite people, Mr. Patton. I rise today to talk about youth services. I am glad that the chief was here. I am extremely glad that y'all had an extended conversation about what we need to do in the city. But one of the things we need to do is we need to do something about youth services. I know that we all read the paper this week and saw the article on the front page. And I have to tell you, I was very disturbed. I am old, I am getting older. And I want to leave the city in a better place than what it was. We cannot do that if we have twenty-two and twenty-three and twenty-four and twenty-five young men under the age of twenty committing such violent crimes. We've got to provide some kind of services for them. Read the article, called Ms. Olivia and asked her if we could come down today and she agreed. Last year, this city council put into its budget some money for the Birmingham school system to provide after-school services for youngsters. I've come to ask what has happened to that money? Has the school system taken that money and provided services throughout the city of Birmingham? Not just Abindale School, but at all the schools on all sides of the city. We have got to have something for these young people to do. We've got to have them not carrying guns to settle arguments. We can't have thirteen-year-olds shooting twelve-year-olds as we have had that came out of the Tom Brown community. We've got to do something with HABD. That's where a lot of robber crime is coming from. I know Mr. Horton is going to say that HABD is safer than the city at large. But the problem is, is that they're safer because they're bringing the crime outside of public housing into the communities. I want to ask, we also gave money to Boys and Girls Club. And I have heard something very disturbing that if you are a citizen of the city of Birmingham and you want to be involved in Boys and Girls Club, you got to pay. And my thing is, is that my tax dollar that I have given you, Boys and Girls Club, should allow some children who cannot afford to pay to come for free. Something has got to be provided for the young folks in the city of Birmingham. So that they do not feel that there is nothing that they can do. I know Counselor Roberson has his hundred days of nonviolence. That's great for the youngsters who are in school. But I have young men who stand in front of a store about two blocks from where I live. Who you can see the guns in their pockets. We, the old folks, I'm now seventy-eight, thank the Lord for every year and every day, are afraid. But I have a cane and I have a dog. And I'm afraid. But I'm not going to allow you to attack me. And as the people say, I got an ankle biter and he barks loud. But we, the city, who have given these agencies our money, I'm rounding up, Mr. President. Who have given these people our money. We need to make them accountable for what they have done with our funds. And are they spending them on our young people? And I want to thank my councilperson for taking down Lockway Gardens. Your next task is to take down Monteverla. And thank you.
Thank you. Have we, have we sent the money to the Board of Education? All right. Next speaker. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, my name is Olivia Thompson. I live at three twenty-five Twelve Street Southwest, Birmingham, Alabama. I'm here to complain, I don't know who, I've been to the board and I've been to the city, I've been talking to someone in the city about who owns J.J. Freedom Center. When I go to the board, the superintendent says the city own it. But when I talked to someone over at the city, they said we don't own it. So I'm being confused, the place is shut, shut down. Our children don't have nowhere to go. And I haven't, I've been patient, I have not been complaining. It's been shut down since July. Our children don't have after-school program, which was free for our children to go over there to help. That's the place where our children won national championship. We helped tutor them. Now they can't go. The school, the elementary school wants to charge them after-school fee. Their parents can't afford, some of them their grandparents who have custody of them, own a fixed income, own disability, cannot afford to pay for four grandchildren to go to after-school program. So what the center was free and we were tutoring them and they was getting help and now it's closed. And our children are in the cold. It was a safe haven place because it was surrounded by a resident, not no business but that. That was the only business there, restless residence, a safe haven for the children. You had children coming from, we own a high school, Jones Valley, Araton, Weston Academy. They had them coming from Hemp Hill, different schools around in that area to go to their center after school. As you don't know, our library give you thirty minutes to get on the computer. Well, when our children have homework, thirty minutes is not enough to be on a computer when they don't have a computer at home. But at J.J. Freedom Center, they had long and ample time to get their homework on the computer. So they're, again, they're shut out, nowhere to go. Our children are going to be a part of the city in the neighborhood. You see all the people in the paper, young. If we don't catch our children when they're young, look what happens when they get older. We need to get our children while they're young. And we need to find out why is the center closed and who can open it up? Or can our children have somewhere to go so they can get help and get some education, so they can better themselves? We don't need our neighborhood just keep going down, our children keep going down. We say we love the children, they need help. Show that we love them, go and give them some help. Thank you.
Honored to God to help my life to the city council, honored the mayor. Like to wish everybody a Happy New Year and minimal New Year, I hope minimal New Year. Also, I want to like say, William Parker, we had, we went to the Valentine, not the Valentine, the red and blue ball for Christmas. And we got a word for you, Barbara, our president got something for you. And she told me we will give it to you, Mr. Parker. And this one noted, men appraise, we'll kick back off this year. We want the city council and the mayor, if y'all come to see, we'll let y'all know where we're going to be at pretty soon. And so we still, and my prayers go out to, to Georgia Byrne Tiffany, it's one of our church members, William Parker, Oak Street. Georgia Byrne lost somebody, her family and Tiffany, I can't think of a Latin name Tiffany. But anyway, we'll let you know when the service is going to be. And I'd like to say, you know, this year been a good year for me, traveling all over everywhere, you know, different places during the Santa Claus. Also, I am now sixty-one years old. I thank God to be sixty-one years old. Sixty-one year, I was birthday December twentieth nineteen fifty-four. And I would like to say, Happy New Year to everybody and my family and my sister and my stepdad, all of them. Happy New Year. And also my alumni, my Mel McCaw High School alumni, president Barbara Gallin is the president. And I'd like to say Happy New Year to her. And we going to, this year, we planning on going bowling for scholar. For all the Calvareans would like to go to the bowling, for scholar, we go to bowling. And we going to get ready to go to the bowling. We'll let y'all know when we get ready to go to bowling for scholar. And that's all, I'd like to say Happy Birthday, men appraise, we'll let y'all know when we start back off scene again. And we'll let y'all know. Happy New Year to everybody, the mayor and the city council and everybody. Happy New Year to everybody, I love everybody. God bless you and keep on trusting in God and keep on doing work.
Next speaker.
Gilbert Klein.
Please state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, my name is Gilbert Klein. I reside at thirty-five seventeen Hickory Avenue, Birmingham, Alabama. To the office of the mayor, councilors, and fellow citizens of Birmingham. First of all, I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. I would hope that this year would be much better than for the government and the citizens of this city than last. While attending Alabama State University in the early seventies, I was introduced to a musical group called Chicago. Some of you might know me as Chicago Transit Authority. Well, on their first hit album, there was a song called Where Do We Go From Here? On this date, January five, twenty sixteen, with all the recent negative publicity that the city has received. The three hundred and thirty million dollar plus annual budget of the city approximately. The question that I asked... of the city approximately, the question that I asked the city officials and the citizens is where do we go from here? And my, it is my contention that it is time to implement the disparage study. It is my contention that it's time to threaten Compass Bank, who has made a eleven billion dollar Community Reinvestment Act commitment to all cities in its footsteps. It's time to threaten them that if they don't bring it to our communities, we gonna take the money out of their bank. It is my contention that it's time to do business with blacks and minority groups when letting up the city contracts. It is my contention that it's time to address all communities the way that we address the South Side. Where do we go from here? As a city, we can no longer operate with business and politics as usual in the city of Birmingham from this point forward. Politics as usual has destroyed the public image of Birmingham just after celebrating fifty years of civil rights. The question of two sixteen is where do we go from here? The answer is in the hands of the mayor, the council, and the citizens. On another note, I'd like to commend the mayor and Councilor Roberson for their professionalism that they carried on during the night of the storm. Mr. Mayor, you were quite professional. Councilor Tyson, on my way here, I took the back road to City Council. And I saw the folk from that company that you talking about, they had a tractor so big that we had to go around two lanes. They got, they got it going on. You got the right folks on the job. You know, when I saw you break down over there a little bit, all the hard work and effort that you put forward, I'm asking all the City Council and the mayor to do the same. But it's time to threaten Compass Bank. They got eleven billion dollars. They mean no bank that I know, and I'm profoundly understanding of community reinvestment that ever received a needs-to-improve recommendation from the federal government. And we got our mo, majority of our money in a bank that needs to improve. Well, let them start improving in Birmingham. Y'all have a Happy New Year.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers, Councilor Skiles, Olden New Business.
Thank you, Ms. President. As always, I want to thank the citizens of District One as well as the city of Birmingham. Well, afforded me the opportunity to be their voice. I do want to say Happy, 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 Happy New Years to everyone in the city of Birmingham. And I'm looking forward to great things happening in District One. We have several projects that are going up, but I look forward to even greater initiatives. Look forward to bond monies and streets being paved and parks being completed. I look forward to all of those things happening in the year of two thousand sixteen. I also want to say kudos again to the mayor and his staff for the service provided during the storm or the tornado that occurred on December twenty-fifth. And not only for the western area, which was certainly much hard-hit, but also in the eastern area of Birmingham because we do have a lot of flooding. I want to also say thank you to my council colleagues who were very kind to me. My birthday is actually on another day, but they celebrated with me on yesterday. And so for all of my Facebook family and friends, but most importantly, my colleagues who really care a lot for me and I genuinely love them, I want to thank them for helping me to celebrate on yesterday. And lastly, let me also say that I am very, very excited. I, my daughter will be twenty-five this year and I'll be married twenty-five years, the Lord allowed me to see it. And so there are a lot of great things personally that are happening for me, but the main thing is that I want the citizens in District One as well as the city to always know that their happiness makes me happy too. So I look forward, Mr. President, in the days and months to come, that we're going to work very, very closely with the mayor and his staff and the communities to make sure that we're going beyond talking. I meant what I said earlier. I believe that Lockway is just the beginning of great things happening throughout all ninety-nine neighborhoods in the city of Birmingham. Thank you, Ms. President, for allowing me to make my announcements. I think that that is all that I have for now and I do look forward to some of these requests that we've had from Public Works will be fulfilled by the following week. I will say this, neighborhood meetings will take place on this week. They do resume this month for those who had stopped doing them in, in December. But they do resume this month and one of them is Echo Highlands Neighborhood Association. They meet Thursday, seven P.M. at Wynwood Baptist Church, or they may have moved it. But further details, if you'd like to call the office at two five four twenty-three forty-nine. Also, we have Spring Lake Neighborhood Association and they too meet seven o'clock, but at Springville Road Library. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to make a brief announcement that the Park Board will be meeting tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, but also wanted to say congratulations to and thank the mayor, thank the City Council, thank Public Works, Plan Engineering, and all of the different departments and the Park Board staff for a wonderful event that we had with the Tenth Annual Birmingham Bowl. And so I wanted just to say and thank all the citizens and for, I think, a great event. And I think it was able to showcase Birmingham as being truly on the world stage. And so I just wanted to say a complete thank you to everyone and that concludes my report.
Council Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I wanted to comment on the Birmingham Bowl too because I feel like every time I go to Legion Field, it's improved a little bit more. And I just thought that the Birmingham Bowl was one of the best times that I've had at Legion Field and it wasn't just because my team won. It was because everything was spruced up, looked better, felt better, people were having a good time. And even in the rain, I didn't even hear anybody whining about it raining and being chilly. It was just everything worked out, I thought, very well. I'm sure there were problems somewhere, but I didn't hear any complaints about any of them, so I thought that that was really excellent. I'm disappointed that they didn't find a sponsor for us when we almost filled up the stadium with people, but you know, that's the way life works, next year maybe. But anyway, the Education Committee is now accept, accepting resumes for four board appointments on the Birmingham Public Library Board, so anyone who's interested, the cutoff is January twelfth by close of business. So anyone who's interested in being on the board or finding out more about the board appointments can contact our office. I hope that everyone has a Happy New Year. We've got three hundred and sixty days left to have happiness in our lives, so hopefully we'll make it. The Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood meets tonight and then next Tuesday, East Avondale meets and also Highland Park Neighborhood. There are a lot of free computer classes at the Birmingham Public Library in January and although there are fourteen of them, I won't tell you about all fourteen, but four struck my fancy and that was the hiring, learning about the hiring process for Jefferson County, how to find funding for your nonprofit, databases for genealogy, in case you're knowing where you came from, and how to research your house's history, in case you want to know what your house was doing before you got there. So those are just four of the fourteen, but the Birmingham Public Library has lots of wonderful information to offer. And if we just repair all the library buildings and fix all their leaking roofs, we'll be much better off. I also wanted to mention that the library, because they're short on personnel, has initiated a lunch hour policy where they actually close for one hour for lunch for their staffs because they have to have at least two people per library and they don't have that right now due to shortages. I think they're thirty-five people down in staffing at the Birmingham Public Library. So they have initiated a one-hour closure for public libraries. So if you're going to the library, you need to make sure you arrive when the library is open and not when they're closed for lunch or you will be disappointed. So those are my announcements and I hope once again that everyone has a Happy New Year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Hoyt.
Yes, just wanted to prize the community at Fairview Neighborhood Association meets on tonight at Church of the Fairview, no, not the Church of the Fairview, meets, meets at the Western Precinct at six o'clock. And the Thomas Neighborhood Association meets at Mount Hebron on tonight as well. And the next Public Safety Committee meeting will be held on Monday, January eighteenth at four-thirty in the, in these chambers here on third floor. So I have, Mr. President.
Council Tyson.
Thank you, President. On Tuesday, January the fifth, Oakwood Place will be meeting at four P.M. Harrison Park, Mason City on, on January the fifth at Henry Crumpton at four-thirty P.M. January the eleventh, West End Manor, six P.M. at New Hope Baptist Church. January the twelfth, Arlington West End, six P.M. at the West End Library. South Tittysville on the twelfth at six P.M. at Tittysville Library. PIC meeting will be held January the twelfth at two P.M. in Conference Room Eight. All submissions are due in my office by seven, on January the seventh, by ten A.M. And I would like to thank all of you, all of my colleagues and mayor for getting this done with Lockway Gardens. And I know we, Ms. Mosley brought up, you know, the other big complex that we have. We are in the process of getting it, Monteverla Gardens, we're in the process of getting, getting it condemned now. But this, what this would do to the community, I can't even speak of, of what you, you have just done. And if you could have seen these people face and the senior citizens face, when I talked to them this morning, I think you would be in tears with me. We are so appreciative of what the council and the mayor has done today. Thank you so very much and Happy, Happy, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Council, Mr. President, Council Tyson, you got your new year. Started off right, haven't you? That's a blessing. I do have a brief video I'd like to share from the tornado relief efforts in District Seven. Brian, if it's ready, will you please roll it at this time?
Right now, thousands are affected by the EF2 tornado that ripped through District Seven in Birmingham on Christmas Day. As with any disaster, many are left without some of the basics in life.
What are you saying? Rain, rain, go away? Come back another day?
There is a chance to help them. This little girl will be happy when all the bad weather is gone, but as councilor for District Seven, President Proton J. Roberson isn't waiting that long to give back. He gladly donated this dollhouse that his own daughter plays with, an unselfishness shared by this entire community.
It is evident that we are family in District Seven. During this time of Christmas season, everybody has come together. And we've had neighbors come together, helping out other neighbors. It's like family here, churches helping out in the community, just everybody putting forth an effort to make sure we can bring back a better quality of life for those citizens that were affected.
If you would like to donate monetarily, please make the check out to Project Hopewell Incorporated. Your gift is tax deductible. If you would like to donate non-perishable clothing, cleaning items, or toiletries, you can drop them at forty-eight seventeen Jefferson Avenue Southwest, which is Hopewell Missionary Baptist Church. We will continue to update you with all the latest news on this story, but for all the information related to the Birmingham City Council, please visit our website and subscribe to news updates.
I want to thank Brian Wallace for that piece and the Public Information Office for coming out to cover the tornado relief efforts in District Seven and southwest Birmingham. Mr. President, I've asked also that we put the list of items that are needed on the website, so if we can do that, that would be great, so we can have a list of things for people to look to if they want to provide support and help. Mayor, I did talk to Ms. Scott, Loretta Scott, last night and she's been staying in Extended Stay Hotel over the past few days. American Red Cross has stepped up along with some churches to support her on her accommodations, but keep on your prayers. She actually had to go back into surgery this morning due to the searchers that were in the area that she had surgery on a couple of weeks ago. And if we can help support her, some efforts, I talked to Don Lupo last night and also have reached out some of her family members to see if we can get some family support because she's gonna have to recover for about six days and I don't think a hotel is the best place for her to be located. So just want to put that out there and she was a good spirit and very thankful for all that we're doing to help support her in this time and other families are too throughout the district in southwest Birmingham. Everybody talked about the Birmingham Bowl. I thought it was great. Went well, record crowd, fifty-nine thousand, I think it's four seventy-three or something like that. And tremendous event. Commend Councilor Parker and the mayor's staff for all the work Parker, Rick Boy for what they did to help prepare Legion Field. An old gray lady got dressed up and I'm telling y'all, that dag gum scoreboard is amazing and what it does to create a fan experience and what it does to really bring excitement to Legion Field. So thank you to everyone that was very happy, even Gus Malzahn and Council Abbott was happy to get a victory. So we're one and O in the state and maybe next Tuesday we'll be two and O in the national championship with the University of Alabama. And congratulations to my play son and godson Cyrus Jones and his spectacular game in the college playoff against Michigan State. I'm just proud of him and his efforts and all he's doing. We know the Dragons were victorious in Naples, Florida, undefeated. The ladies team, the girls team, congratulations Coach Bill. They've made a tremendous effort and I think they're ranked now in the top fifteen in the nation in girls' basketball and they went undefeated. The city did step up and help support them with their travel efforts to Naples, Florida for their tournament during the holidays and I'm just proud of all the girls and Coach Bill and what they're doing with basketball that we know in high school. Oakwood Place will meet today at four o'clock. Jones Valley will meet Friday at four o'clock. Western Manor will meet next Monday at six. Oxmoor Neighborhood will meet at six-thirty on next Monday. Also, and Ms. Mosley's left, but we are having a teen summit on January seventeenth and eighteenth. I'm surprised Bishop, since I'm, he's my grandfather, didn't include this in his schedule of events because I told him about it, but we are having a teen summit to address matters related to violence among young, amongst young people on January the seventeenth and eighteenth. It's not just for school kids. You can register at www dot one hundred D N V dot com. We will have sessions on workforce development, sessions dealing with gun violence, relates to youth, sessions dealing with bullying, sessions just for boys, sessions just for girls, and we're gonna discuss every aspect of what we can do to help reduce violence. We have some visitors coming in from New Mexico, a youth group there to be a part of this and it's gonna be some real brain trust discussions and I welcome those that want to participate to come out. It's, it's important that we get them to register to vote. I think young people need to vote. That's very important. So we will be discussing all aspects of what you can think of to help reduce violence in the Hundred Days of Nonviolence Teen Summit on January seventeenth and eighteenth at the Birmingham Museum of Art and then we will join the march and parade with Bishop on that day. So we welcome everyone to come out and please register at www dot one hundred D N V dot com. The slots are going fast. Last but not least, I'd like to move a resolution of sympathy for Mayor Gary Richardson, Mayor of Midfield, he lost his mother this past week.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed.
Move the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed.
And I believe, thank you, Council, and thank you for your support of Mayor Richardson. I believe the funeral is on Saturday, eleven o'clock at Bethel Baptist Church, Pratt City. Our prayers go out to the Richardson family at this time. Thank you, Ms. President. Council Hoyt.
Yes, Mr. President, I did want to certainly thank our colleagues and those who came out to help feed the policemen on Christmas Eve. Matter of fact, it made national news. I want to thank Brittany for getting out the press release. We got wonderful coverage throughout the country, not just in Birmingham. But it's, I guess it was a good, a good gesture that others took notice in what we've done for the last almost thirty years or so. But I want to thank the mayor, I want to thank former mayor, Dr. Kincaid. We have a friendly competition. Thank Council Lundey, Council Skiles, Council Tyson. We had four councilors who were there feeding the policemen on Christmas Eve and it was exciting. We had a great time. time, a lot of laughter, and then we had folks who just came by and want to be fed. So we, we did what we needed to do with respect to our men and women in blue, and thank them for allowing us to serve them, because they do serve us on a daily basis. And it's just wonderful when the community come together, but I have the wonderful task of working with wonderful neighborhood persons who, who do not find it robbery to serve, whether they're getting credit for it or not. But the Christmas Eve dinner would not have been a success without the neighborhood officers, and Ms. Dora Sims, the President, and Ms. Diane Kane, the Vice President, and want to thank Ms. Sherry Lewis, who coordinated that whole dinner. Matter of fact, I told it's the biggest crowd that I've seen in my years of, you know, participating, and then I've not seen so much food. So it really was a great day for all. I want to thank her committee. There were several persons who contributed to that, but the Five Points West Community Officers, period. Mr. Robert Littleton, who hit up our appreciation unveiling ceremony that we did honoring Ms. Amadennis, Mr. Hudson, Kunwalis Hudson, and Ms. Rosella Reynolds, who all were neighborhood officers who made a tremendous impact on this city. But I want to thank he and his committee for the unveiling of those persons, and of course, Ms. Mara Tava, who headed up our firemen. We had a great time with our firemen this year, and then feeding them, and I want to thank all the neighborhood folk who helped to do that. And then our Christmas tree lighting and ceremony. Matter of fact, we had a band, we had several bands in the parade. I wasn't there because I was out of town, but I think your dog was there. Was your dog Chuck Dog, Chuck Price Dog was in the parade, and I know that Judge French was there. I want to thank her because she came, and matter of fact, she sponsored the turkey that I cooked. So I want to thank Judge French, Elizabeth French, for doing that, and also Ms. Patricia Henderson, who coordinated that. She's an awesome person in the community. Ms. Angel Jackson with Green Acres, and Ms., again, Ms. Sherry Lewis, the Vice President, and Ms. Cecilia Williams, who also from Bush Hill. But we had so many officers, so many community folk, and just people who just showed up, because that's what we do best, is serve the community. So I want to thank all of you, and Council Skiles, I want to thank you for coming out, and you, you know, you made the difference, I believe. You got us in the spirit of serving, so we appreciate your contagious personality. And, Mr. President, I think it would be appropriate if we were saying Happy Birthday, even though we don't know what date she was born. You know, that's what celebrities do. They don't let you know their real birthday, but that's how it is. So can we, can we join? Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, dear Mrs. Happy Birthday to you. You getting better?
Yes, Lord.
All right. Very good. Well, thank you, Ms. President. That's all I have, and at some point, we're gonna bring those persons to the Council and just kind of publicly thank them for their work, okay?
Thank you. My announcements, Smithfield meets Sunday, January tenth, from four to five at the Goldenberg Restaurant. Gates City meets Monday, the eleventh, from six to seven at Mount Mariah Baptist Church. Oak Ridge Park meets Monday, the eleventh, from seven to eight at New Community Baptist Church. And East Avondale meets Tuesday, January twelfth, from six to seven at Bethel Baptist Church. I do want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. And Mayor, I do want to thank you for providing these new budget books. I've been reading through mine, the slim one, we'll get to the thick one. But I do want to thank you for providing those to us. I just got mine this morning. I bet they look good. April, I'm sure you probably had something to do with that. So thank you. I want to thank Officer Lewis from downtown Substation, Officer Morris for providing, from the South Precinct, for providing our security this morning. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed.
This meeting is adjourned.